All right, we're going to call to order the city council under renewal of agency meeting. With a declaration of forum, all members present except for councillor Hartley we're going to excuse this evening. Please join me in the front seat.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, this evening. Mr. Smith, any changes? First on our list on our agenda is proclamations or recognitions. Senior youth advisors. So, we have some proclamations or some recognitions that we're going to give you. And they're all essentially the same. I see some of you are present this evening. Mr. Davis, how many do you have?
We are, I think it's short, one.
One, okay. So, I'm going to read the recommendation out and then I will give them out individually afterwards. How about that?
What was that thing you said?
And then I will give them out afterwards.
Okay, sounds good, thanks.
Can, I'm not...
No, you're fine, she was...
She was being disruptive in class. Senior thing. Okay, this is a Hermiston, Oregon certificate of recognition presented to Heavenly Coleman for her service to the Hermiston community as a city councilor youth advisor and volunteering to be a civic leader by actively participating in city government. Hermiston youth advisors are selected and appointed for their willingness to represent the up and coming generation by sharing their ideas, offering feedback on city initiatives, and advocating for positive growth in the Hermiston community. Their perspective and participation is invaluable in helping elected officials in city government create a more inclusive community. Let me know this 22nd day of May 2023 that Heavenly Coleman has been an exceptional example of leadership and civic pride and that the city of Hermiston thanks her for her efforts. Signed by myself, Dave Drotzman, Hermiston mayor, and city manager Byron Smith. So, we have one for Heavenly, we have one for Caitlin Watkins, Stormy Richmond, Lydia Vanderstelt, Elizabeth Doherty, and Haley Gardner. Does that sound right? All right, come on up, girls. Stormy?
So much.
Congratulations, Sarah. Didn't you guys ready Caitlin Watkins? Caitlin, thank you. Lydia Vanderstelt. Haley Gardner.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Doherty?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And last but not least, can you make sure this gets to Heavenly?
Yes, I can.
Mr. Davis, thank you. So, let's get these ladies around the class. So, if any of the ladies are here this evening that would like to speak about their experience or what they thought about it, this is our first full year of actually going through the youth advisory. This is your opportunity to kind of use your speech skills you've learned in school and tell us a little bit about your experience and if there are things that you think we could do better, we appreciate hearing about it. There you go, Stormy.
Hello. Hi, I'm Stormy Richmond. I'm part of Youth Advisory Council. And I just want to thank each and every one of you for this opportunity to see what it's like, to know what's going on in my city. I find it really fascinating, honestly, and explains all the things that are going on. So, it's nice to have that explanation. And going on through my career in poli sci, I think this definitely gave me an insight into what I'm going to go through in the future. And so far, I'm pretty much loving it. So, thank you guys so much for that. I do appreciate all the funny questions that I have to ask or that my advisors have also asked. For your patience and your standing, it's really appreciative. But yeah, I'm very excited for this next year's Youth Advisory Council and I hope that they are offered as well the same opportunities. And yeah, I just wanted to thank you guys so much.
What's your future look like?
I will be attending OSU in the fall and majoring in poli sci and then hoping to become a paralegal. So, thank you.
Others that would like to speak?
Elizabeth, you're never shy.
So, Elizabeth Doherty, the main thing that I'd like to say is that this was a very valuable experience because of the connections that all of us were able to make with the head community members and yourself. And I think that's a very important thing and I've been seeing you guys all around the community ever since. So, I'm glad I was able to make those connections and learn a bit more about the government within our city. And I think that'll be able to translate well in my job, in the state government, even within some of the clubs that I'm in part of. It's been very beneficial. So, thank you for this experience.
So, Elizabeth, don't go anywhere yet. Where are you headed to?
I'll be attending Stanford, probably majoring in human bio.
Choices?
Thank you.
Are there others? Yes? Mr. Davis?
The rest are too shy. They are, not in class, you'd be surprised. So, I do want to say, I don't mean to not point out the other members, but Elizabeth, I was talking to her mother, Missy, who's a vice principal at the high school. And Elizabeth went down to Stanford last month for kind of an early entrance kind of meet and greet. And one thing that Missy said to me was that the school and others there were very interested and impressed with Elizabeth's being part of the Youth Advisory Council, being part of the planning commission, and were really interested in that whole process. And Missy wanted me to tell you guys that she thinks, whether that's just her mom's bias or whatever, but a big reason why she got accepted into the school, which I went to Western Oregon University, so I didn't even apply to Stanford, but I managed a hard school. But just very appreciative of you guys, of this group, of Mr. Smith as well for getting this going. And hopefully we have other Hermiston grads going on to great things as well. So, I just wanted to say thank you, guys.
Well, Mr. Davis, before you go, thank you too for your leadership and engaging in the process and working with the city to figure out a pathway for this to become reality. We've really enjoyed all the youth advisors we've had this year, youth advisors we've had last year. And so, that's great experiences with all of our youth advisors and I hope we can continue that moving forward. I think a lot of us adults want to see youth advise, or youth involved and engaged in the civic process. Too much of that is lost and to get to be bold like us, well, some of us, you know, you've missed out on an excellent opportunity to participate in governance and the future of your communities. So, I would encourage you guys to all continue to stay involved and engage with the communities wherever you land. Hopefully, it's back here. We hate exporting our talent, so we hopefully will bring you back someday and you'll be the future leaders of our community. So, thank you for your leadership and that, Mr. Davis. All right, Mr. Smith, presentation tonight from PATH. Stepping Stone Executive Director Jesslyn Cole, I guess is not going to make it tonight, and you're going to do the presentation.
I am. I'm going to review their quarterly report. As we were scheduling this, we weren't able to work out all of the logistics. And so, Jesslyn is actually listening, watching us online, so she'll check and make sure I did this properly. But the first part of their report is that they now have, they now have three full-time staff members with Stepping Stones, then executive director, a navigation director, and then a sleep center director. And so, they're up and functioning. And a few weeks ago, they had a session where they brought together all of their partners related to kind of the navigation center portion of how they're going to help connect their clients with those resources in the community. I think they, it was very successful. I attended for a little bit, but I know they were working together to just kind of come up with, so that they could know what resources are available, so they can begin to share that with those who are coming in to utilize those services. So, that was, that was very good. From a site standpoint, construction should have started today. I didn't actually drive by to verify, but they were, they've gone through all the permitting and the timelines from the state historic preservation office. And so, they were eligible or able to start construction, I believe it was Friday. And so, I think today they were going to, the city of Umatilla and Umatilla County crews were going to do some of the original, or the kind of dirt work and then, and then start installing septic and well will come soon after. So, still shooting for July timeframe to have an opening for the, on the site. And the sleep center services are continuing to be offered at the former Sears building. They were able to kind of squish to the back and Mr. Atkinson was able to operate his business in the front portion and they'll still be able to utilize the back portion of their warehouse for the remaining time until they move to a permanent location. Let's see, I didn't want to share, they're seeing, and I spoke with Jesslyn the other day at Rotary and it's continuing to go down, but averages in January, they were seeing about 16 guests at the sleep center per night. Went down to 12 in February and eight in March. And she was sharing that it's gone down from there even into April. So, you know, with the better weather, more people are kind of just making it on their own, I guess. So, there are fewer coming there for, for the sleep center services. On the shelter units, they've completed 20, over 20 of them. And that's what was the commitment, that was in the contract or agreement between the city of Umatilla, or basically our IGA among the cities and Stepping Stone. So, those will be ready to move on site as soon as the site is prepared. So, that will be good. They know, they were really grateful for all the community participation. Lots of, there was a couple of businesses that sent some, some of their staff to work on it and as well as a number of churches sent a number of volunteers. So, they were very grateful and happy for that. And that is all for right now. If it's a question I can't answer, I can get with Jesslyn and bring it back to you if there's any questions.
All right, it's my understanding that they're going to have all those shelters set up out there for individuals to reside in during the day or during the evening. They're also still going to have a sleep center on that site as well. And then there's also going to be like a facility for food or kitchen.
Yeah, they call it the navigation center. So, there'll be kind of a, an indoor space people can go into. It'll have some office space for, for the clients to meet with, you know, some of these service providers that are partnering with Stepping Stone. So, there'll be those services available on site as well.
Restroom shower facilities.
Yes, they, they, right now, it will be a, they have purchased a mobile shower facility. That's going to be what they'll use for right now, but the longer term plan is to build, you know, some permanent shower facilities and so forth on the site as well.
Any other questions? Yes, councillor?
I know it's the sleep center, but on those months prior to July, will there be any kind of accommodation when we have those very hot days and people need to, you know, indoors to cool down?
Well, I'm sure we'll work with them to figure that out. I don't know that they, they may have a plan already. I have not talked with them about it, but I can come back and let you know what their, what their plan is.
Councillor?
I know that the people at the sleep center will know about the shelters, but are, are they want to go around and recruit or let other people that have not gone up there so they'll know where the shelter is?
Well, I think that's one of the reasons they're reaching out to all of these other providers, people who have contacts, so that they can also let them know. But yeah, they'll, they'll be actively reaching out as much as they can.
Thank you. I would imagine too that, you know, I think Chief Edison told us 20% of his engagements every day are with transients. And so, I think that'll be part of the process I would expect as well. Conversation will be, hey, there's some housing opportunities and services available. I would encourage you to build there.
Yes.
Part of the conversation.
Sure, that will be.
Yes?
What type of onsite security do they have? And when has that begun or when does it begin?
Well, they, they already do employ staff at, in the, you know, through the night. So, it's not volunteers who are there at the sleep center. And that will be similar type of an arrangement. There'll be all-night, full-time staff, or not necessarily full-time, but staff working for Stepping Stones that will be there to deal with any emergency or those types of situations. They're also from another type of security situation that the site will be fenced and secured so that, you know, that there will be, you know, monitoring of who comes and goes and so forth, especially after certain hours.
But no specific onsite security?
Well, that, that, the staff member that will be there all night will be a security slash, you know, but it's not going to be, it's not going to be law enforcement if that's what you're looking for. It will be...
Well, not, yeah, not necessary police officers or anything like that, but just...
But it won't, it will be a staff member of Stepping Stones.
Byron, was it true too that they were going to have, you know, security type lighting? And I think they also talked about camera systems potentially as well.
Right, there's, yeah, the, the site plan, that's one of the first things that will happen after they create the site, putting in all the infrastructure for the on-campus lighting and then security cameras and so forth.
Others? Thank you. And tell Jesslyn we missed her and hopefully we can see her the next one. She probably heard of me since she's home.
Yeah.
Okay, now we're at the first opportunity in our agenda this evening for citizen input. If there are individuals that would like to speak to the council about items that are not currently on our agenda, please come up to a microphone up front, introduce yourself by name and address. Try to limit your comments to less than five minutes and direct them to me. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Carrie Christensen.
Make sure the microphone is on.
Can I do that?
There you go. Thank you.
My name is Carrie Christensen. I live in Umatilla County at 470 Christensen Loop, long time resident. And I'm one of the landowners that will be significantly affected by the proposed Gethin Road project. First and foremost, I'm here to say that we did not receive proper notification from the city of Hermiston that we as landowners need to just show up on the main to speak on our behalf. I most definitely would have been here in attendance. I've lost respect for the city management on the way this is being handled. We actually had Anderson Perry on our property before the city even voted for this. We're not allowed to comment because we were not properly notified. There's a few things and questions that I believe need to be addressed. What is the city's goal in terms of this road? Did the city conduct a planning analysis of this route? Is this on the transportation plan? And if yes, what page? Was the transportation or engineering study done before adding this, adding this route to the city capital improvement plan? Was public consultation part of the capital improvement plan? I want to hear what our fire chief Stanton has to say about how we're saying this is going to be safer for our town? And was this part of, do you have damage proof that? This is supposed to be a 35 mile an hour collector and in most cases, people drive 40 on 35. You talked about this becoming a residential area because of the 200-plus acres, which I don't really know where that's coming from. 35 miles an hour in a residential area is not safe. Also, speaking with ODOT, how safe do you think a traffic light is going to be in the winter with the trucks coming down the hill and trying to stop there at Port? Where it would connect? Consider that. Have you been in touch with the Oregon State Extension Office? I don't think so. They have a pump station right in the middle of the proposed road, brand new. It's going to cost a lot of money to move that. You might want to look into that. I've already talked to Carlos at the Oregon State Extension Office. It takes out their pump station. It, you know, feeds water to all the crops that they grow up there. It's a lot of money. My pump also will be affected. Water lines, power lines, irrigation property, everything will have to be changed. Again, expensive. Have you notified the irrigation district? Do you realize it takes out a 77-year-old's front yard? Would you like to be that age? Having cars go 35 miles an hour in front of your house? Her family's been there since 1931, almost 100 years. It is very hard to speak about it. She can't look because she was so upset. I'd like to propose that we talk and have some communication because I would have talked and no one, and I know some of you personally. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to come to cry, but this is a big deal and this affects my family, our lifestyle, my mother, who's 88 years old. We just spread my dad's ashes on that property. It affects us significantly. I understand that Hermiston is growing. I'm not, I'm not new to this. I love this town. But I think we need to think about transportation on bigger picture. I lived here long enough to care about what we're doing and the safety of the city. I don't know that the 35 mile an hour collector is the right thing. I really expect to have some communication from the city. We were not notified. We would have had people here to speak on our behalf. We were allowed. Anderson Perry was on my parents' property without permission, did not go to the house, did not speak to anyone. Showed up, put stakes in the ground before the city even voted on it. That's not okay. I just really have lost respect and I really wish that you think about this. I mean, like I said, I understand the city is growing. I did that. But I, I'd like to be part of the solution too. I've talked with commissioner. I've talked with Commissioner, um, Dan Doran. I've spoken with ODOT. Like I said, I've spoken with Oregon State Extension Office. I've, it, I'm, I'm here to help with finding a solution also. But I think there needs to be more studies done on this. And you could have said something to me as well, Mr. Morgan. I'm just disappointed. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Christensen.
Thank you.
Are there others that would like to speak this evening? Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Um, consent agenda items A through F. Are there any of those that need to be approved? Okay, seeing none. Can I get a motion? Is there any public comment on consent agenda items A through F? Not seeing any. Uh, can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items A through F? Second. 移到 by Mr. Ann, second by, uh, Councilor Brown. We approve consent agenda items A through F as presented, call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Ordinances of resolutions, resolution 2272 authorize installation of stop signs.
Yes, Mr. Morgan.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, this resolution is to authorize the installation of a stop sign at the intersection of Southwest Third and West Locust. I guess it'd be two stop signs to stop east-west traffic on the Locust Avenue section. Uh, there at the intersection, a number of the councilors who were here several years ago probably remember we discussed this intersection about three or four years ago. We had, um, an engineering firm do traffic counts at the intersection to analyze whether or not it meets engineering warrants to install a four-way stop. At the time, the traffic counts did not warrant, it was closed, but it did not warrant installation of a, of a four-way stop at that intersection. Since that time, I believe it was just a few months later, um, the high school completed its northern parking lot. Additionally, over time, I think more and more high schoolers are becoming more familiar with utilizing that northern entrance. Um, additionally, I think the food pod there at the corner of Third and Orchard is becoming more utilized and more, folks are becoming more used to utilizing that. And then additionally, again, just kind of looking forward, uh, the high school is nearing completion of their expansion on the north side, which will only again add additional students to high schools. So based on all of those, in conjunction with requests and feedback from neighbors in the area, uh, we are recommending the council approve a four-way stop sign by adding two additional stop signs for stopping east-west traffic on Locust. So Mr. Morgan, that is, um, there's a two-way stop currently then? Yeah, currently it stops the north-south traffic on Third. Any other questions? Yeah, I don't know this one specifically that conversation probably was about. It's gotten additionally busier over there, so. Any, no questions from the council? Any public comment on resolution 2272? Okay, I get a motion to approve.
Second.
移到 by Councilor, second by Councilor Brown. That we adopt resolution 2272 and lay it upon the record, call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Airport Engineering Professional Services Agreement Award, Mr. Smith. Yeah, Mr. Morgan, please. Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, every three to five years, FAA recommends that we put our engineering services for specifically our airport engineering needs out to bid to ensure that we're continued to being served by the most qualified engineering outfit that is able to provide service to us. Uh, we have done this process in 2012 and 2017, and we're just at the time now where we need to do it again. Uh, we've had exceptional service, I feel, and the airport committee feels from our existing airport engineering firm, which is Precision Approach Engineering. Uh, we put it out to advertising again in the spring. Uh, Precision Approach responded to it. Uh, the Airport Advisory Committee reviewed the response, interviewed Precision Approach, and they announced and recommended that we again proceed with executing a professional services agreement with Precision Approach, um, so that they can continue to be our engineer in the future. Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Um, in the new contract, was there any substantial changes versus the old one? No, and probably worth pointing out, um, what you're approving this evening, I mentioned in the staff report, has no fiscal impact. Um, this basically selects, Precision Approach is our engineer of record. Um, and then since larger projects that occur at the airport only happen every few years, uh, once one of those comes along that would require a significant amount of engineering services, they would develop a dedicated scope of work for just that project. And if it's over a certain threshold of dollars, then it would still have to come back to City Council for you to approve that contract individually. So the overarching services agreement, no changes of substance from the last one. Now, again, dollar wise, this has no darn impact. Any other questions from the council? Any public comment on Airport Engineering Professional Services Agreement Awards? Okay, can I get a motion to award the professional services agreement for airport engineering services to Precision Approach Engineering?
Second.
Motion by Councilor Frimmer, second by Councilor Harden, that we award the professional services agreement for airport engineering services, Precision Approach Engineering, call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Review and possible approval of Project Path strategic plan, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, a few weeks ago, we, we had drafted this strategic plan in front of the council for review and comment. Uh, we sent those comments back to, um, to the city of, of Umatilla, basically in their work to develop this strategic plan. And there were five changes made between that review and now. First, the Stepping Stones Board membership was, was updated to what they currently is. And then adding a reference that, um, to make sure, you know, this plan will be a piece of, you know, it will be static. And so if people want to see an updated list, there's a note that says, go to their website and you can see who their, uh, current board members are. We also, uh, made some changes, uh, just made a note to the partner listing. Again, this will not be a static list. They'll be always working with potentially new partners or, you know, different groups coming in to offer services. So just saying that this is the current list as of now and, and we will continue to work to keep it updated. And again, that would be on there, uh, the updated listing would be on their website. Uh, based on our comments, they also added a developmentally disadvantaged or disabled partner with ARC of Umatilla County as a provider so that to acknowledge that those also would be potential services for those coming and participating. And then the final addition was a paragraph just kind of highlighting that this is a, kind of a, a working plan. We'll review it annually. The advisory committee will review it annually. And then if any changes need to be made, then they will be brought back to the partner agencies to amend that strategic plan. So those are the changes that were made after the council reviewed it. Those are, and, and basically the rest of the plan is, is what you reviewed. So be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I appreciate the fact that, um, Stepping Stones and Project Path went through this five-year strategic plan. It looks like a pretty intensive process, you know, outlining vision, mission, values, kind of identifying their core mission of trying to transition houseless people into a housed place, um, and providing social services to, to those identified that need some support. Um, I appreciate everything that is, seems pretty comprehensive. Seems to be a couple vacancies on there as well, uh, on the path or the Stepping Stones Board. So I think they opened up a couple more spots for community members to participate. And those are at-large appointments or?
Yeah, I mean, initially they are out seeking, um, some membership maybe from each of the communities. So right now Hermiston is represented, but Umatilla, Stanfield, Echo are not. So they're reaching out there first, but they're open, you know, it's, as we know, I think as a city, it's a challenge to get volunteers to participate. And so I think they would be open to anybody who shows some interest and willingness to work and serve on that board.
Great. So if there's a community member out there within the four communities that would like to participate, um, is there an application process that you're aware of? Or how do they get involved?
Uh, I believe if they would just email, use the, the website and email Jesslyn, then she can point them in a, in a proper direction.
Any other questions from the council about possible approval of Project Path strategic plan? Yes?
I do have one edit, only the first letter in ARC is capitalized.
Okay. Okay, any other comments? Any public comment about review and possible approval of Path, Project Path strategic plan? Seeing none. Can I get a motion to adopt Project Path strategic plan as presented?
So moved. Second.
移到 by Councilor Peterson, second by Councilor Brown, uh, to adopt Project Path strategic plan as presented, call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Smith, please pass along our appreciation, uh, for them presenting this and all the artwork they put into it and their concerns and addressing this. So appreciate that. Uh, April 2023 financial report.
Yeah, it's me again. Um, Mr. Kay is not available tonight, so I'll be reviewing this. So initially, uh, first one we look at is the HIRA. Everything seems to be going well there from a financial standpoint. We, uh, overall, uh, we've exceeded our estimate on revenue collection and projects are kind of moving forward. Uh, we should start to see some expenses as we move forward with the Second Street Gateway project that will be, Mr. Spencer, is that out to bid or?
It is out to bid, yes.
All right, the next, um, page I'd like, next highlight is general fund resources. Now, uh, we well exceeded our revenue projections for April. A number of those are related to building projects and building permit revenue. Uh, we provide for the city of Umatilla, a plan review for their Amazon campuses. And so we do that review well in advance, but they don't, we don't get, they don't get paid, and so we don't get paid until, uh, the permits are issued and, and purchased by Amazon. So, uh, we billed last quarter and were paid for last quarter, and that was a large, um, it was a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. So we're, um, happy to see that, that moving forward. But there were other, uh, plan review fees for our, for the campus starting in Hermiston, as well as a number of construction and electrical permits that had exceeded our, our projections. So that's the reason for this being higher than anticipated. Now, on expenses, we had this, uh, item also exceeded projections. Uh, this is showing, uh, what was approved in the last supplemental budget, which was a transfer of, uh, ARBDA from the general fund into the, the City Hall Construction Fund that, um, basically kind of zeroed out that project, brought it to, to balance. So that's above the, uh, what we were projecting for that. If you pull that out, um, we would have been 73,000 less than projected. So a lot closer to our, our normal spending pattern in, in this time of year. Uh, general fund balance. These, uh, continue to stay well above our, our policy minimum. And, uh, as we look at projections into beginning the next fiscal year, it, um, it looks like we're going to be in a good position, uh, moving forward. Now, as far as capital projects, uh, we have really some brief updates just, uh, on North First Place Construction. Um, as you can see, it's, it's underway. It's all torn up. And the first piece of that, as you can see, that they've, uh, there's a bunch of old pipeline on the side of road with some fire hydrants and so forth. So that's going forward. That really, these two projects are together, the water line and the road construction. Both of them are underway. And then, um, Penny Avenue Extension, uh, is also, has, has started. And, uh, after we got over the, the first little emergency with the water line being hit by the contractor, I think everything else is kind of going relatively smoothly. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Lot going on construction wise, it looks like.
Yes.
So just be prepared, community, that Hermiston's under construction again. Trying to avoid the areas of First Place. My Hermiston Avenue is now open, so people can transition through there. They did, contractors did a great job getting that, getting in and getting out because that was a major intersection. Um, but go north on First Place, still a mess. And you can kind of see how nice it's going to look because they cleared out all the brush on the road between there and railroad track and how wide that's going to be. So it's really going to open that up a lot. Um, Penny Avenue and Phoebeville and all that sort of stuff out there.
Right.
When does Phoebeville, the construction?
Um, when do we think the water line is going to be?
The water line will be finished September 27th. Mark my words.
Or before then.
Or before then. All right, perfect.
And then ODOT has to throw some on top of that. So Highway 207 is getting some resurfacing.
Yeah.
And so that's a problem between Highland and going south, so.
Yes.
Um, I was driving by and I saw the pipe and how rusted it was. I'm like, is that the pipe that was like 1920 or something?
Yes.
Okay, gee whiz.
Yeah, that's one of our oldest sections in there.
Oh, okay.
It's good to have it being replaced.
Yes, yes.
We can leave it out there on display though. For, we need to appreciate why it was so important to replace it.
Yeah, Roy always keep, tries to keep a nice piece of it out at the water department, so.
There are community tax dollars that use and they can see the visibility of that. So why it was so important. Other questions about the financial report? Okay, uh, any public comment on the April 2023 financial report? Okay, can I get a motion to accept the April 2023 financial report as presented?
Second.
移到 by Councilor Lynn, second by Councilor Harden. Not really, yes. Okay. To accept the financial, April 2023 financial report as presented, call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. City committee reporters? Anyone? Yes?
Uh, yes, we had a Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, um, went over quite a few things. Lots going on. Um, Art Festival, June 3rd downtown is 10 to 3:30. The city, all-city volleyball leagues. Uh, they have started this, it's with Kenwood, Pasco, and Richland. It's fifth and sixth and seventh and eighth. And they got that set up and it is going.
Actually just ended this, uh, this last weekend.
No, there you go.
And I will say that, uh, the fifth and sixth grade won the championship for the all-cities volleyball. So it's Pasco, Richland, Kenwood, Crosser, and Hermiston. So, uh, good recreational volleyball champions in the fifth and sixth grade division.
Hermiston?
Hermiston champions. Brought back the trophy.
And the second grade swim program has, uh, is getting started. And the second grade swim program has, is getting started. It has six schools in it, and they're working on getting a fifth grade swim program going. Has she gotten that going yet?
Not yet.
Okay. And June sixteenth will be the opening of the pool. Splash Pad is Memorial Day. And we have the much awaited ski park ribbon cutting. First shovel of dirt on June sixth. How long, Rod?
All time.
No, I'm not. Um, the one that is not quite as upbeat, but we're trying to make some progress on this. Hodge Park has become a problem again with the playground equipment. It's just a mess and not inviting and should not be inviting to families to go there. They, you know, it's not a good place. So we're currently looking into donating the playground equipment to someone that could repair it or has a desire to because you can't paint over it and it's, it's a mess. It's not good for attracting families. So we're going to try and donate that and put something else in there that, a basketball court or something maybe that, you know, be a little bit more constructive to where it's at in close parts and near the high school. So that was our Parks and Rec meeting.
Any update on the front park playground?
No.
Civic should be in tomorrow.
And then?
We'll be unpacking and getting really quickly on finishing up out there, so.
Get it installed before it gets stolen again.
What's your projected date? I don't have a projected date. I would say mid-July at the latest. I think it'll be done sooner than that, but again, I have to go through everything else to be put on.
Looks like you had quite a sod rolling party at Horizon Park. Laid a bunch of sod in a very short period of time. What was, what was the data?
A hundred and thirty-five volunteers, a hundred and thirty-five plus, eighty-eight pallets of sod in just under two hours.
Wow, it was so fast. I would, that was what I volunteered for. And I was out there with Brandon's little girls handing out snacks and water. And you just, every time you look up, it was just, it went so incredibly fast. It was very impressive. Brandon did a great job of getting all those volunteers organized and getting that going. It started precisely at nine o'clock and was done before eleven. Yeah, it was very nice.
Any idea how many of those were community neighbors?
There was a lot of neighborhood people there.
Yeah, quite a few neighbors from the local community up there came out. Had a great contingency from Walmart DC. They brought out, I think, over a hundred. Land Weston, Marlet Homes, Rogers Toyota, the high school, football team, the advisory council. Just a plethora of different people coming together and, you know, grabbing sod rolls together and laying them out. It was quite the sight to be, very cool to see our community coming.
Very good. Obviously, it's got irrigation, right?
All right.
Yes, it was going, I thought.
Yeah, it's going non-stop.
Very good. Thanks to all those volunteers for supporting the project. And the reason I asked about the community engagement, the local neighbors, you know, when you're involved in a process like that and you've had some kind of sweat equity involved, you tend to take care of it better and you also look out for it. And so it's important that they had some local ownership and partnership in that. So good to hear that process went well. Any other committee reports?
Yeah, the time, the time off speed, you know, was pretty good.
Council Jerome.
Yes, we had a Hispanic Advisory Committee meeting third Monday of the month. Two big things that we just discussed, we had a presentation from President Founding and Susan Bauer on BMCC input. So they were coming and having a couple of listening sessions, wanting to get the Hispanic Advisory Committees' take. So we filled in a couple of questions. The committee, as well as the audience, was able to participate, give some good feedback. And so that was a good opportunity to give some feedback on, I guess, where BMCC's future wants to be, what they're trying to accomplish. Our committee really was telling them to leverage the trades, really focus on that, to focus on being in the local school districts, making sure that, you know, they can offer those tangible results. So I think a big thing that the committee was able to say was with how college, just being able to go to college or I guess college degrees, there's almost like an inflation of a lot of college degrees and not so much in the trades. So emphasizing that the trades are a good career to have as well. And you can make a good living by being able to get into apprenticeship or a program like that. And so that's what the committee really focused on when we talked to BMCC about that. We're also meeting this next week, in this next month. Typically during the summer, we don't have a large audience because of a lot of our population ends up being in harvesting. It's a lot of work, but we are going to meet next, next month. We also discussed Cinco de Mayo and having two Cinco de Mayos. And so we discussed in-house about how we can collaborate in the future to hopefully have one big fiesta. So that's as much as I got. So that was an update from back.
Thank you. I appreciate the fact that there's enough interest to want to have two. But I also like the fact that having one community celebration would be easier on most and collaboration amongst the groups would be welcomed. So thank you for having that conversation and trying to work through that. Others? Any comments? Okay. Mayor Report, just want to show or say a special thank you to the I Love My City event. You know, that was Saturday. Council Harden told me they had seven hundred and...
Six hundred and twenty volunteers.
Six hundred and twenty volunteers across the city doing various projects. And so...
That's all the businesses that were, as Brandon mentioned, was involved too.
Yeah.
And I know that we had our celebration on Sunday at EOTech and there was like eight hundred people.
Yes. Amazing turnout this weekend to show support for the community. And so just really appreciate everybody's volunteerism to love their city, show a little faith and happiness and appreciation for their community and do some community cleanup. I just appreciate that group so much for their willingness to organize and support and help fund this process because it's been such a valuable benefit to the community for years. And so great to see it continue. And I just want to say a special shout out and thank you to them. I don't have nothing else on top of that. Councilors? Yes, Council Jerome.
I just want to say thank you to the police department for seeing the need to train your officers in conversational Spanish. You know, I think it's important to be able to connect with the families or connect with the people that you deal with, sometimes in the schools, sometimes out in the community for various events, not just for, you know, the calls that you get to go on. But I really appreciate that. And before coming to the city council meeting, I actually went to the listening session for BMCC. And I wondered if maybe in the future that would be like a partnership where BMCC could offer something locally, you know, like teachers that maybe you guys are a class, you know, that your officers could attend? Or, you know, I don't know. But something that maybe a partnership with BMCC that maybe could work out in the future. I don't know. But what I started out saying is I commend you for, for providing training to your staff. Really appreciate that.
I agree. The more diverse we can be as a community inclusive, so we can engage and meet people where they're at is, is great. And so I think it's a, that's a pretty significant commitment, right, Chief? Was it several weeks?
It was a week-long training.
Week-long.
About five thousand dollars is what we spent.
And it was eight hours a day for a week or something?
Correct.
Yeah, so that's a pretty significant commitment. Just got to get them to use it now, right? So.
Exactly.
And feel comfortable with it. You know, if you don't use it, you can lose it. So I have practiced it almost every day in my office. And so if you don't have that regular repetitive use, it's pretty easy. But I just applaud all the officers too that participated in that as well. Another added value benefit to our community. So thank you, Chief, for your leadership on that. Others? Okay. No youth advisors this evening. They all went home. Number one?
Yeah, when they left.
One that stuck around? Thank you. Anything you would like to say? Yes, all right.
Yes, I, I was shy earlier, so I was about there. But I would just like to...
Is it on? Yeah, can you be on?
I would just like to extend a thank you for this awesome opportunity. It's been really cool to be on the Hermiston, Parks and Rec Committee with Brandon here. I've got to oversee a lot of different projects that I didn't think I'd get to be a part of. So I think it's a really amazing opportunity and I'm excited to kind of see where it leads. So thank you.
Well, you know, the youth engagement is welcome. We want to engage more of our youth because we're trying to build a community that you're going to live in someday. So you should have participatory say in that. And so we appreciate you engaging in that and, and helping us with that conversation. And I hope you will encourage your underclassmen to participate as well in the engagement.
Of course, of course. It's been really fun. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Smith?
Yes, what I'd like to start with is Julian's going to give us a quick summary of the award that the city won, our court won.
What? Nice. Should I do one too?
I packed this home in my suitcase. It was not overweight, so it was happy. I haven't been here recently because I've had conferences the last two, three council meetings. And two weeks ago, I was in Texas at the Tyler Connect Conference where Hermiston Municipal Court was awarded the Tyler Excellence Award. So Tyler Technologies is who the court uses for our software program. They have government software for almost every aspect. And they, a few years ago, started doing the Tyler Excellence Awards for agencies that are improving their community or improving data and transparency, operational efficiency, equity and access, or performance and innovation, which is what we went for. We were nominated for this because last year we identified and closed out over fifty-one thousand old open cases that shouldn't have been open in our software. So there's me and two clerks, and in nine months, we were able to do that. We also went ninety-five percent paperless. I say that because we still take papers at the window if we have to, but our process is completely digital. And what this has done for us is a defendant can walk in and we can give them their court records because we are current and up to date. I can come before city council. I can meet with the city manager, Smith, and give accurate reports on what the court is seeing. Our cases also get resolved faster because it's digital and we aren't packing files around. So because of this award, Hermiston Municipal Court has been identified as a municipal court leader. We, Tyler Technology serves over one thousand municipal courts, including the entire state of Texas. So for us to be recognized was a big honor. And because of this, I have heard from other courts in Oregon, as well as Pasco, Washington, and some courts from Oklahoma that have said, how did you do this and can you help us do this too? So that's what's exciting for me is that we did just win this award so that I can share my knowledge and help other municipal courts across the nation improve their operations and improve their community.
Well, congratulations. Appreciate your leadership.
Thank you.
And your engagement with your fellow coworkers and rolling up your sleeves and making stuff happen. Fifty-one thousand cases in nine months is amazing. So thank you and please pass along our appreciation to your staff as well. Mr. Smith, is that going in the mayor's showcase?
We're going to have to get a showcase first, if we can. Actually, tomorrow, we're going to have a meeting to talk some more about art and things like that in City Hall, so.
Maybe I'll bring it to the showcase.
There we go. Do you have anything else, Mr. Smith?
That's it.
Okay, keep it pretty short tonight. Yes?
Just as a suggestion, considering the people involved, I mean, it's great to put like a cool shiny thing, but to put a picture of the people who made the shiny thing happen with it, it really just makes it even more useful and gives credit where credit is due.
Yeah, great. Very good. Also, Mr. Smith, we do have another meeting, budget meeting. It's going to be the thirty-first.
That's correct.
Six o'clock here.
We're going to meet here, yes.
Okay, and if you would like dinner, dinner will be provided at five-thirty here. Okay, just as a reminder. All right, we are going to adjourn the city council meeting and convene the Urban Renewal Agency, what they called the quarter. All members present, we're going to excuse Council McCarthy, with some new business. Mr. Smith, the North Hermiston Urban Renewal Plan.
I'll start with Mr. Spencer.
Mr. Spencer?
Yeah, tonight, we're here to talk about the North Hermiston Urban Renewal area. This is an area we've been working on since about 2017. We, Mr. Morgan and I, back then, put together a work session that we held with city council where we discussed several potential transportation improvements that are in the Highway three ninety-five corridor between Elm and Theater Lane. And in that time, we've been working in the background, working on that. And in 2020, we partnered with Portland State University and University of Oregon to do the Sustainable Cities Program. I had some engineering students and planners looking at some of the options we originally developed for the corridor. And the idea of connecting Aspen Drive to three ninety-five, following the Hermiston Drain, and then intersecting three ninety-five at the Home Depot driveway with a new signal kind of floated to the top with the Sustainable Cities Program as the recommended option. We then moved forward with the city council authorizing us to prepare a urban renewal plan and report for creating a commercial area, about a hundred and twenty-five acres. There are three ninety-five frontage, to be a potential funding source using tax increment financing, where the existing base of tax revenues as of this year, 2023, would still continue to flow towards all of the agencies who are receiving that revenue. But then any additional value that is created in that urban renewal area would go into the agency for funding the road and signal improvements. The feasibility report and plan have shown that even using a conservative three percent, just growth in value would be, would be adequate to fund the four and a half million or so that is necessary to build those streets. If, as is hoped, some of the vacant land that would be serviced and benefited from this would be a substantial increase in value, that would then allow the district to pay off much quicker. And we have contracted with Elaine Howard, who is here tonight to just kind of go over the plan and report findings for you. Urban renewal is nice in that it has several stop signs along the path, and this is one of those places that we're at tonight. Back in March, you, you agreed to accept the feasibility report and direct staff to prepare a plan and report for forming a third urban renewal area. Tonight, this report and plan is coming back to you for not approval, but acceptance that you can either make or break. You can accept the report and direct us to schedule the hearings and do presentations at the planning commission, county board of commissioners, and then schedule hearings in July. Or you can say, this isn't the right thing at this time. So that's pretty much where we're at, and I'll turn it over to Elaine.
Thank you, Seville. I'm Elaine Har. I've been working on this project with Johnson and...
I'm Elaine Howard. I've been working on this project with Johnson Economics, who did your original feasibility study in 2017. So we brought them back to hopefully do that at an efficient rate to update that feasibility study. Wonder why I hit that? Oh, there we go. So the role of the city agency tonight is to review the proposed North Hermiston Urban Renewal Plan and decide whether to forward it through the public process. So as Mr. Spencer says, this is really the first stop in the public review process. The agency makes the decision whether or not to send it out for the formal public review, and we'll go through what those steps are on the next slides. The formal review is tonight, the agency needs to go to the county for a presentation. They do not have a vote on the plan because there's no unincorporated properties, but you are required to give them a briefing on the plan. You need to present it to your planning commission for them to find conformance to your comprehensive plan. And then goes to the city council. The city council is your determining body. So right now, you're acting as an agency. When you act as the city council, you will review a non-emergency ordinance after noticing for a public hearing. And you have to do that notice citywide. So it can either be, and I believe you're doing it through utility bills.
It is utility bills.
So it will go out in all utility bills. And then a non-emergency ordinance has a 30-day time period, after which it then becomes effective. And during that 30-day time period, it can be referred to the voters if enough people file a petition with the signature to refer it. So it is a full public process for the approval of an urban renewal plan. This is the boundary area in the shaded part, and I'm tied to identify kind of the two main streets so you can see where the area is. So you have the first street or 395, and then you have Elm Avenue at the bottom or Highway 207. And Mr. Spencer, if you want to go again, what that project would be specifically there, or do we need to do that?
Would you like me to just kind of run through it, or?
Let's see. I think when I get to, so this is the map. And if you want me to come back to the map, when we go to the project description, we can. So when we get to the project description, if you can do that, that would be great. So we'll come back. There are statutory limitations on how much urban renewal a city your size may have. So you may have up to 25% of your acreage and 25% of your assessed value in an urban renewal area. You have two existing urban renewal areas. You have the downtown area and the southwest Hermiston Plan that was adopted last year, and then this plan. This district is approximately 102 acres. So your total acreage at urban renewal would be 620, which is 11.48%. So you're totally fine on your acreage limitation. On the assessed value limitation, you take your total city assessed value minus what's called excess value, which is that increased value in your other urban renewal areas from the time they were adopted. Then you add up the frozen base of those areas plus the predicted frozen base of this area and do your calculation from there. The estimates are you would have 8.23% of your assessed value in urban renewal, which again is significantly lower than that 25% limitation. So, Mr. Spencer, if you want to go through the projects?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Yes, would you like to describe the projects?
Yeah, basically what we've been looking at is doing, as it says, an east-west connection that will extend from Aspen Drive, run diagonally along the Hermiston Drain, and then turn again right at the north end of the Rogers Toyota or Good Shepherd property to intersect Highway 395 there. It would be a new signal with right turn and left turn and through traffic lanes on the cross streets. We would like to also build a water line that extends under the new street. There is a, the city's main trunk sewer line already runs in the Hermiston Drain, so we don't need to do any sewer improvements to make the area commercially viable. But the water line would be needed to extend through just to be able to make sure all parcels can be developed as well as to develop looping water pressure. And then we would also need to acquire the right-of-way for the street where it crosses two parcels. We've had preliminary conversations with both property owners who are available to the dedication of property, and then we also have compensation for said right-of-way in the plan itself as a financial item.
These are the estimated costs of the projects, both in 2023 dollars, today's dollars, and then your expenditure dollars. You can see that those actually are totaling up to the same, which is just under $5 million for the total costs of the projects. There is a small amount of money in there for administration because when you have any urban renewal area, you are required to file the annual reports and have the annual financial audits for those areas. And then there is a small contingency. And given the way prices have been going up on capital projects, I'm sure you'll be happy to have a small contingency. On the financial forecasting, this was done by Johnson Economics. So the maximum indebtedness, the area highlighted in the teal color, is $5 million. Maximum indebtedness in urban renewal is the total amount of money that you may spend on projects, programs, and administration. The top gross is total net TIF or tax increment funds. That is that maximum indebtedness plus any interest you may pay on debt if you have to borrow money to pay the, to do those projects earlier and then pay the debt. Over time, you have interest payments on the debt. By statutory definition, that interest payment is not included in the definition of what is maximum indebtedness. So you are able to collect a little more money than the $5 million to pay off that interest payment also. The capacity years one through five is high here because it's anticipated that you will take out a loan at the very beginning to be able to do those projects in fiscal year '24, '25. And then after that, you will be paying off debt to pay for the actual project. Revenue sharing would commence in this project fairly early on, and that is because there are revenue sharing thresholds that say once you receive 10% of your maximum indebtedness, you have to start sharing with the other taxing districts. So that is what revenue sharing is. It's sharing a portion of those tax increment revenues that come into you with all the other taxing districts who otherwise would forego the taxes on that money. These are the revenue sharing projections, and you can see if you have eyesight better than mine, that I think it's fiscal year in '28, '30, it's either '34 or '35, when the revenue sharing begins. And it's calculated on the amount of funds that would exceed 10% of that $500,000. So anything that would exceed $500,000 worth of tax increment funds would be shared with the other taxing districts. This was set up in 2019 as a request by the special districts, the revenue sharing component of urban renewal. So it is something that they look forward to so that if an urban renewal area is successful, then they're able to share in the success of that district. This district is a relatively short district. It's only 16 years long, and it's a very small maximum indebtedness, that $5 million. So a lot of new urban renewal areas are from 25 to 30 years. So having a shorter urban renewal area is also something that other taxing districts appreciate because you're able to go in to cause that infrastructure to happen, and hopefully you have other development that will happen upon which they will enjoy the property tax increases. These are the totals of the estimated amount of money that the taxing districts would forego as a result of the urban renewal area. So the counties amount is just under $1 million. The city of Hermiston, a little over $2 million. Yumitilla County Fire District, $607,000. The Ford of Yumitilla, $53,000. County Radio, $59,000. Cemetery District, $32,000. And mosquito control, $70,000. For, this is just a general government category, a little under $4 million. And we calculate that in the two documents that were attached to your agenda item and that will go out to the taxing districts sometime this week. It'll have this full table in it that shows those projected impacts by year over that 16-year timeframe. Again, these are just projections based upon that 3% growth and a couple of projects that we knew were going to happen within the area. And indeed, the area could terminate more quickly if development happens more quickly on those parcels than what we projected. And we projected fairly conservative development so that hopefully people will be pleasantly pleased at the district and what we have projected is pretty much the most conservative scenario. For the education districts, these are the total amounts. And before we go through those, we need to remember that in urban renewal, education is indirectly impacted. They are funded through the state school fund, the school district and the education service district. They're funded on a per pupil basis, and that per pupil number does not go down just because there is an urban renewal area either in your community or statewide. So although it impacts that total amount of money that goes into the pool, the legislature has the ability to tap other funding sources to equal that funding amount for the per pupil basis. For the community college, they are funded by the number of classes that are taken. So again, it's not directly from the assessor's office to them. It's based on the number of students that they serve. So the amount of money that will go to those statewide funds is a little over $200,000 for the education service district, $230,000 approximately for the community college, for the Hermiston School District, about $1.7 million, for a total of a little over $2 million, that equals that $6,61,000. And again, that million's higher than, that amount is higher than the $5 million maximum than this simply because of that interest paid on the debt over the time of the urban renewal area. This just shows that computation on an annual basis for each district, for the education districts. So the next steps and schedule is on June 14th. The planning commission will review for conformance to the comprehensive plan. The county briefing is scheduled for June 21st. Your city council hearing is scheduled for July 10th, and the city council vote for July 24th. This is a fairly long motion, if anyone chooses to make it. And it's just as long because it identifies those different steps to make it clear what that full public process is so that if anybody wants to go to any of those meetings or be involved in any of those steps, they know what those steps are. So if you'd like, I can leave this up, but you may also have that in your packet. So you can tell me to, or Heather, take it off if you'd like.
No, we don't need that. Are you finished with the presentation?
I am. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the council or from the community? Yeah, Ms. Lemon?
Okay, I was looking at the draft and I just want clarification. It's on page 13, Section C, Amendments to the Hermiston Comprehensive Plan and/or Hermiston Development Code. That, my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that you automatically be able to do something and you won't have to bring it to the council to approve it. It's just like, for instance, if you want to do eminent domain on property that someone does want to share or sell or easement or anything. So does that mean that you can just automatically go ahead and purchase it? Or what does this mean? I'm not exactly sure.
All actions have to go through the council or the Urban Renewal Agency Board in this case if we're doing any kind of amendment to the plan. If we're changing anything that would change like our comprehensive plan or our development code, that still has to meet all of the state statutes in 197 or S-197. So again, that would go through our planning commission and city council. And as far as eminent domain, that is kind of a formality, but it is necessary to have certain things like that resolution and necessity whenever you're entering into negotiations to acquire real property. In this case, we have had preliminary discussions that say they're willing to participate, but sometimes we do have to actually follow through on the various statutory requirements for actually acquiring property. And that does require certain notices and certain motions by council.
May I add to that? So on the section of the amendments to the comprehensive plan or development code, all this is saying is when Mr. Spencer does an amendment to the comprehensive plan, you don't also have to amend your urban renewal plan. That because your comprehensive plan has been amended, it is the master document. This will just follow whatever goes through that. So this doesn't mean you can do anything outside of that other process. And on eminent domain, Mr. Spencer's answer is 100% correct. And the thing that I think is important to be clarified is you may not take property from any property owner and then resell it to somebody else for any kind of use. You may use eminent domain for purchasing for the road or for the water, but you may not use eminent domain to buy your property and resell it to them. And I think for anybody listening, that's a good clarification to know.
Other questions? Okay, any public comment? Okay, so can I take a motion to have the Hermiston Urban Renewal Agency forward the North Hermiston Urban Renewal Plan? The Hermiston Planning Commission for their review of the plan's conformance, the Hermiston Comprehensive Plan, the Yumitilla County Commission for briefing, and then to the city council for their review to hold a public hearing and vote on adoption of non-emergency ordinance. So then move by. Are we saying councillor or is it agency member? Member Barone. Or member Barone? Mister. And seconded by member Primmer to...
Move it forward.
Yes, move forward everything I said. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes to unanimous length. Anything else, Ms. Smith? All right, we are adjourned.